Good morning, everyone. We'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our October, I didn't mean to scare everybody, to our October 1st zoning hearing. As our custom, we have the pleasure of introducing the Pastor Tim Wren of the Christ Lutheran Church, who will lead the invocation. And for those who can participate, please stand.
Invite us into a time of prayer. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks on this day for the many good and blessed gifts that you give to us. Lord, we give you thanks for those whom you have called into elected leadership in this place, over this county. Lord bless them in their decisions. Send the Spirit of wisdom and encouragement to be amongst them. Give them patience and peace. Lord, we pray on this day that you watch over all of us, that you lead us, that you guide us, that you encourage those who are marginalized, that you look out for the oppressed, that you care for those who are outcast, and that you are a God that will continue to build us up and lead us forward each and every day. For these things we ask, and for those which we don't know. In your most holy and heavenly name, amen.
Thank you, Tim. And Officer Ott of Cobb County Police Department will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a, not a long agenda this morning. We've got a lot of hold cases. And, but I would like to take just a brief moment to, on behalf of the board, to say that we want to give our condolences to the Lee family, our commissioner. I worked with him. I don't know where anyone else up here worked with him, but the staff did. We all worked with Tim, and he was a good person. He's going to be missed, so we would like to send our loving condolences to his family. With that, John, if you would give us the rules and regulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, would the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance? Then we're going to call to see if there's anyone opposed to the case. We would ask that the opposition would also stand and raise their hand so they could be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, they will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case or concerns. There is not a rebuttal process, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute timeframe. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to their front for questions or comments. Today's printed agenda has one case on it that has been withdrawn. That case is Special Land Use Permit Number 11 of 2019, Milestone Hotel Management. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice by staff, will not be heard. So SLUP 11 of 2019 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request late last night from the attorney representing rezoning case Z60, Liberty Investment Properties Incorporated, and also its companion, Special Land Use Permit Number 13, to withdraw this case without prejudice. The applicant's representative is present, so we'd ask the board to withdraw these cases without prejudice.
Okay, we need a motion for that. Is the attorney here? Oh, it's Parks. Yeah, Andy, if you'd make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow case Z60 and the associated SLUP 13 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion, a second call question. And that's withdrawn.
Thank you. There are also a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held that will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z71 of 2018, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z71 of 2018 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z43 of 2019, Embry Development Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z43 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z45 of 2019, WS Hotels LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z45 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z53 of 2019, Land Development Associates LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z53 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z61 of 2019, Basco Properties LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z61 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z62 of 2019, Embry Development Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z62 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLEP 4 of 2019, A1 Auto Course LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 4 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLEP 12 of 2019, Gunnison Tree Specialist Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP 12 of 2019 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there are two other cases that are not on the printed agenda that need to be continued. First case is rezoning case Z52 of 2019, WLM Holdings LLC. This case, the applicant would like more time to work with the community, so the staff would ask you to continue this case until your next zoning hearing.
That would be regardless district.
Yeah, we did talk to Mableton Improvement Coalition as well, and they did desire the continuance as well to keep working on it. So I'll make a motion that we continue Z52 till our November hearing.
We have a motion and a second call question. That's approved till the November hearing.
Thank you. Second case is rezoning case Z59 of 2019, Davis Enterprises LLC. The applicant has asked this case be continued so they can continue to work on their concept plan, Madam Chair and Board, and the applicant is present today.
And that would be Fred.
Make a motion to continue it as requested.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. And just out of, do we have anyone that's here concerning this case?
There is one or two people here today. But the stindles in the back there.
And no one has any objection to holding it? Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Call the question. That's approved five to zero to hold it.
Okay. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume on mute. The ringing of the phones does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years, immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more is made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. Anyone participating in today's hearing who plans on presenting a video, PowerPoint, or other visual document should have the presentation materials screened by a member of our communications staff, and Cornelius Pope is the person at the front here who could do that for you. And this should be done for the thumb drive or other medias plugged into a county computer. And this is just done to make sure the county does not get any viruses from outside thumb drives. And with that, Mr., Madam Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay, John, please continue.
Thank you. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for October 1st, 2019. Rezoning case Z57, Eric Klein, Rede Klein, request a rezoning from R20 to CRC for the purpose of a professional office in landlot 898 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Providence Road, east of Roswell Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 28th, 2019, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Professional offices only. Variances as listed in the zoning comments, fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and department transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicants are here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z57? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z58, Robert Hague, request a rezoning from R80 to R40 for the purpose of a single-family house in landlot 1002 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Timberland Drive, north of Beechwood Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Proposed garage to be architecturally compatible with the existing home. Single-family use only. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and department transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z58? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 20, Open Arms Group Home, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a group home for teenage boys in landlot 1272 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Lindsay Drive, north of Jamestown Court. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Allowance is for DFAX children only, and department transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to land use permit number 20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 14, Dobbins Mill Phase 2 LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a used auto sales business in the interior of building number eight only, in landlot 283 of the 17th District. The property is located on the terminus of Dunn Avenue, west of West Atlanta Street. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on July 5th, 2019, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Vehicles to be inside building eight only. No junk or inoperative vehicles to be kept on-site. No outdoor storage, no parking, or unloading vehicles in the rideaway. And any vehicle repairs to be done inside the building. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 14? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And Madam Chair and Board, that completes the consent agenda.
It's back to the board here. And any commissioner have any comments or additions to the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make some additional stipulations to zoning cases Z57 and Z58. Starting with Z57.
No, you don't make a motion, you just add.
I'd like to add that the second story to be used for storage only, as indicated in the rezoning application. That the maximum building height be limited to 35 feet. There shall be a sign conforming to the Cobb County signage ordinance to identify both buildings utilizing, a single sign conforming to the Cobb County signing ordinance, identifying both buildings utilizing the shared entry. No construction parking or equipment or material unloading or loading on Providence Road. Construction land development work to be limited to the following hours. Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No work on Sunday or holidays. And that the district commissioner may make minor modifications to the approved zoning, except those that increase the density of the project, reduce the size or composition of an approved buffer, relocate a structure closer to the property line, increase the height of a building, change an access location to a different roadway, would be in direct conflict with or a direct contradiction to the Cobb County Code of Ordinances or zoning ordinance, and/or require a variance waiving applicable regulations of the Cobb County zoning ordinance. Finally, the final site plan and elevations to be subject to review and approval by the district commissioner. And that's, that's all.
Okay.
I've got a copy for.
Madam Clark, you have it. And the next one.
On 58. And I'm sorry, didn't get an opportunity to discuss this with the applicant, but if there's anything in here that is objectionable to you, just let me know, and we can hear it. So on Z, this is Z58, I wanted to add variances in the zoning comments. Structure not to exceed 1,196 square foot total, 23-foot by 26-foot, two-story. Structure may not be used as a residence or a guest house. No construction parking or equipment or material loading or unloading on Timberland Drive. Construction land development work to be limited to the following hours. Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Saturday from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. No work on Sundays or holidays. The district commissioner may make minor modifications to the approved zoning, except for those that increase the density of a project, reduce the size or composition of an approved buffer, relocate a structure closer to a property line, increase the height of a building, change an access location to a different roadway, would be in direct conflict with or a direct contradiction to the Cobb County Code of Ordinances or zoning ordinance, or require a variance waiving applicable regulations of the Cobb County zoning ordinance. And finally, that the final site plan and elevations be subject to review and approval by the district commissioner. Okay, thank you.
Madam Clark.
Just a question, a point of order. I was showing during the announcements that Z60 was being either withdrawn or held. I would assume that would pertain as well to SLUP 13?
It wasn't, he said it.
Specifically, okay, that's all, thank you.
So we have some additions to those two cases, now we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented with those additions to Z57 and 58, and to include four cases, Z57, Z58, SLUP 20, and SLUP 14, just in case there's any confusion on that.
We have a motion, we have a second? Second, call the question. The consent agenda is approved with the additions, five to zero.
Okay, all those folks that are on the consent agenda, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And moving into the agenda. Rezoning case Z56 of 2019, KO Management Incorporated, request a rezoning from R20 and NRC to RE5 for the purpose of a residential subdivision in landlots 37 and 39 of the 17th and 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Mapleton Parkway, north of Wood Valley Road, and on the east side of Glor Circle. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z56? One. Let the record show there's one person. Okay. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Oh, it's his. It's, it's I and D's.
What a big crowd this morning.
I know.
Feels like 2009. Good morning.
That, yeah. Nobody can't, you withdrew all your cases.
Good morning, for the record. My name is Parks Soffel Law Firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff and Valley, and I represent KO Management in relation to this rezoning application that's before you this morning. It is a group of properties that have been assembled over quite some period of time on Mableton Parkway, just north of Wood Valley Road, just south of Veterans Memorial Parkway, and right adjacent to a fire station, for those familiar with the area that's actually being decommissioned. So the group of properties have taken a while to assemble, and my client has been working on that for really over a year to come forward with this project. The, this is, gives you the delineation of the exact properties that are involved, and this is giving you the zoning, current zonings in the areas. You can see the properties include Properties Zone NRC, and it gets up to Properties Zone Neighborhood Shopping. You have General Commercial across Mableton Parkway from the subject property, and it's, the proposal is to rezone all these properties for a single-family detached community. And this is the land use plan showing that the property is a medium-density residential, which as you know, the land use plan has up to five units per acre, and we're a little over three and a half units per acre, so we're well within the land use designation. This is the original site plan that was filed with the zoning application. There were several comments that came out of, out of this, and my client's engineer has been working on revisions to it. And as you can see, this has got Mableton Parkway down on the bottom of the property, Wood Valley, and then another connection up to Glor Circle. And the review engineer came up with a different concept after getting feedback from plan review. And this is what actually I'm showing you this morning. It was sent to me last evening, or late yesterday afternoon. I've shared it with Mr. Porter. And it shows the property being a cul-de-sac, and 20 homes on this property, again, a little over three and a half units per acre. And the layout, I think, is a lot more pleasing than the previous layout. Kind of a more of a traditional layout for the community. It doesn't have the connection to the street above, and it has a connection on Wood Valley. Some of DOT comments had to do with the fact that they've got a trail system that's going to be coming along Mableton Parkway. We've agreed and have on here designated areas for donation of property for that trail system that'll be running along there. This is the, that was kind of a traditional architecture. Now, this is what my client is proposing for this enclave community, which is a more, and I'm not an architect, so I consider this sort of a modern look, and a flat roof, and it's different. And, you know, sometimes we should embrace the difference. And this would be something unique for the area, and, and he's employed an architect, and my client's here, and can tell that, and the architect's sitting in the back, and he's proud of the design he's coming up with. And so when you kind of have a small community of 20 homes to try to differentiate it, make it something special, that's what they propose to do here. The staff has looked at this proposal, and, and as the staff analysis says, it's the, it's suitable in view of the development in the area. As I pointed out, you've got commercial zonings across the street, commercial development, mixture of residential, office, and retail, and institutional in the area, that it is in conformity with the land use plan, which is always good, and something you'll keep an eye on, and we're well within that density of land use plan. One of the previous proposals on part of this property, y'all might recall, was a Punky Poo application. And I shouldn't mention that name, because I think everybody was glad when that name pulled off the, the reading every day, every month of planning commission meetings. But that application had attached housing, which had some community opposition to that. And when my client was able to acquire those properties and incorporate it into his proposal, he was able to make it all a single-family detached. And that is something that the community was wanting, and I think good for the area and very consistent with the land use plan. So after going through the analysis, the staff has recommended approval of the application, subject to some conditions, and we are in agreement with all the conditions that are listed there. My client is here, he's, has come in from out of the country to attend the hearing today. And I know that one of the concerns is always, you know, getting information late, and whether something is tabled. Because of that, he would like to express his request that we've got two weeks before the Board of Commissioners meeting, and see if we could move it on. It's really, quite frankly, you know, with the staff recommendations there, with the fact that single-family detached, what with the land use plan, we do know we've got some details to work out. He's got his architect here that's been, been working with the engineer on coming up with the house plans that fit the, the site plan. But time is, is important to him. And so we'd ask that you move it on to the planning, or to the Board of Commissioners. We have two weeks. If you follow your staff recommendation, approval with staff recommendations, we will tighten down some of the, I know parking, on-street parking is one thing we're going to have to address. We have to address it with staff comments, one way or the other. If we can't do it with our site plan, we'd have to lose some lots. But maximum number of 20 lots, and staff comments would, would require us to sit down in the next two weeks and come up with a solution to some of the outstanding, main outstanding issue, which is some of the buffering on Mableton Parkway, which I know Mr. Porter would like to see and, and understand that concern. But we would ask for that to, to allow us to keep working and move this case forward. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
My client wanted you to just simply come up real quick.
Okay. Here's about three, three minutes.
I'll take less time.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've been invested in Mableton since.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Karimo Garakay, KO Management. I've been invested in Mableton since 2005. I've won zoning cases on Marsha Drive and other areas. I have several properties in Cobb. I believe this project is a great project. I'm willing to work with the Mableton Coalition and any of the opposition here on designs. As one of my, as one of my previous cases, it's better that the notes make it, or I can acquire additional land. So I'm willing to work with the commission, work with the opposition, and work with Mableton Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the chairman of the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We're happy to see a unified plan for this property. We were very pleased to see the application filed many, many months ago. But we, we, I just simply have to voice my opposition to, to moving this case forward today. Not only did we only receive a site plan last night, this is the first time we've seen the elevations. Two weeks may sound like a lot of time, but I. Two weeks may sound like a lot of time, but I, I've lost track of how long it's been since this case was filed and how long we've been waiting for the information that we just received last night and that we saw this morning. So, if this, you know, with all due respect, if there's urgency here, then perhaps now we can get started. This is, it's, it's always good for us to see redevelopment in an area that, that is, is primed for that, and we think the stretch of Mableton Parkway is appropriate for residential development. We're happy to see the application. I think the architecture that I saw today is interesting, but the single biggest issue for us is how this development relates to Mableton Parkway. Mableton Parkway is a five-lane state highway, and this, these, many of these homes will have frontage directly on that state highway and on this trail to be coming in the future. So, the question is this, do these houses relate to that street? Are they visible from the street? Do they meet the street with their architecture? Or is it a situation where the rear of the homes will be, will be adjacent to the street, where those will be backyards? And instead, we need landscaping, perhaps berms, something of that nature, to shield it from the street? I don't know. I'm not an architect. I'm not a, I'm not a land planner. I'm not a, I'm not a designer of any sort. So, I don't have an opinion on that, but we are interested in seeing how the applicant plans to address that. So, I would ask you, please, to let us have some time to work on this case at the planning commission level, where appropriately, these kinds of detailed discussions take place. I would also ask that since the new site plan is so dramatically different from the old site plan, that we have a full revised staff analysis, and that the staff analysis be updated to reflect the new street plan, the new lot layout, the new stormwater location, and the many other changes there. So, with that, again, we're happy to see this development, happy to hear that the applicant is interested in working with us, because we, we feel exactly the same way, and we're eager to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Charles Sprayberry with the Cobb County School District. Appreciate the time this morning to present before the commission and Madam Chair. Regarding Z-56, approval of disposition petition will cause concern for CCSD as it will result in an impact on the enrollment for schools already over capacity, which are Mableton Elementary School and Pebblebrook High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Any other speakers? Public hearing section is closing. It's back to this board and court.
Thank you, Judy. Now, this case has been pending for a little while. We continued it last month to allow time to get the plan, plan finished. And as Robin and Parks noted, we just got the plan late yesterday. And I don't, I don't even know that any of you saw it. You know, originally on July 3rd, I sent five pages of notes about the previous plan. And, you know, they addressed some of the issues in there, but they also went the wrong direction on some issues. One of the big things was that we weren't going to give any variance to 40-foot setback from Mableton Parkway, that we wanted 20-foot buffer. And then, and we'd like that to be in a common area, then 20-foot setback on the individual houses, so that we were really keeping the 40-foot setback. The new plan is at least two lots that have a 20-foot setback with no buffer to Mableton Parkway. The other thing is the detention, which I pointed out, the lower area of the parcel is at the northeast corner, or northwest corner, and they moved the detention pond to the, or to the southeast corner, which is the highest point on the property. So, I don't know exactly how that's going to work.
God, can we take, do you have a copy of the new plan? Could we put it up on the
I have notes all over it. Do you have one you can stick up there?
Yeah, if we can put the new plan up, because none of us have seen it, we'd like to know what you're talking about.
Okay. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time, but you see, they put a bit of a buffer, starting at Wood Valley, which is on the left side of the screen.
Can you enlarge it any?
To four lots, and then we went away with a buffer on the next two lots. But the, the high point.
Thank you.
Now, we don't see it all, but right off the bottom of our screen is where the detention is. Right there. That's a high point of the lot. And then the low point of lots, the other, the other end, the end of the cul-de-sac essentially, is the low point of the lot. And I had pointed out that they had the detention pond in a high spot, so they took it from being in a high spot to an even higher spot, rather than going to a low spot. So, that doesn't make much sense. We still have some setback issues. They're better than they were. One of the things is, and I told them just because of the width and layout on this, was the ordinance requires a 40-foot setback to external lots. We were going to do a 10-foot buffer, then a 20-foot setback on most of them, so we were going to give them essentially a 10-foot variance, because it just wouldn't lay out otherwise. And they did some of that, so I appreciate that. But there's two lots there that just aren't buildable, that would have to drop out, and the detention pond has to move. So, really, it's almost like they went the wrong way. As far as whether it's a cul-de-sac or whether we connect to the other road, I don't really care. I leave that up to them. I think they probably lose a lot connecting to the other road, but maybe not. But, you know, from what I saw in the first plan, my estimate was they could get 19 lots on. With this plan, it looks more like 18 lots, maybe less, because they have to move the detention. So, I'm not sure they went in the right direction, but one thing I'm sure of is we're not really ready to go. The other thing is the Fire Marshal's Office indicated they want to see the guest parking drawn out on the plan, even though it won't actually be striped when it's built, but they want to be able to count and make sure there's enough guest parking. Now, this is a 30-foot wide right-of-way instead of a 24, so they're just planning on on-street guest parking, but they want to have it so that they can see, hey, when there's driveways, there's still enough places to put parking. And I think if, if Amy wants to come up from DOT, I think you might have had a comment of something else you wanted to see. And I don't want to misstate it.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Yeah, and I think you had something about you wanted it to narrow where it came into the subdivision or something like that.
Yes, especially with the previous plan, since it was a connection roadway in its essence between Glor and Wood Valley. We wanted to see what we call curb extensions. Some people call them blisters or bump outs, but where it narrows to a normal roadway width at the entrance of the road, so that it kind of discourages speeding, discourages the people thinking, oh, that's a major road because it's so wide. So, since it's now a cul-de-sac, that would be something that we could work on with if it's an issue.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure we address that. You know, I didn't, that's all I had for DOT. Anybody else? And, you know, the, the elevations, you know, I, I think it's interesting to do something different. So, I, I didn't have a, a big problem with that. We want to know the actual house sizes of those. They didn't, when I looked at the renderings in the previous thing, it didn't look like the houses would necessarily fit the lots. So, we want to make sure that we have things that are fitting lots. These look wider to me, and maybe, maybe they aren't. But before, we were, we had a problem with the box of the house being too big, and there not being proper side setbacks. So, they fixed that now, so that may be, you know, something that we're a little bit better on. You know, I'm not going to go through all the notes from before. I think you addressed some of them, but some of them didn't really get addressed. And we don't have a stipulation letter that we normally have that ties everything together with the plan and the, and the elevations and restrictions and all of those kind of things. So, does anybody else have any comments?
I was just wondering, wondering in the newfound enlarged, what is the parking up there behind that one house?
Yeah, I didn't understand. There's, if, up at the top of it, well, there's also, oh, this little parking, I think, might be related to the mail kiosk. I'm not sure.
That's on the lot.
Yeah, it's showing.
Don't you know they'll love that? Everybody come and get their mail in there.
I think it's related to. I think it's just meaning to point to that little bump out.
Right there.
Oh.
We don't understand what that is.
Okay. Oh, yeah. There's, there's also another miss, there's a parking over here on the very right-hand side of the screen, behind a house, which I don't think belongs. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's also a parking that we're not seeing on the screen right now. There's a parking on the lot number one as well, so those may be just miscellaneous notes that need to be taken off to, to avoid confusion.
Are we reading this right? The landscaping is going to stop on lot 17?
Right, and that's what I was saying. The problem is, we need that landscaping, that 20-foot to go all the way, and then the houses to be set back another 20 feet from that, which makes the way this is currently configured, lot 15 and 16, non-buildable lots.
That could be your open space.
And it could be. They could certainly do some open space. I think they may be able to do a little bit of shifting and make lot 15 work, because they have a little extra room up in lot 12, and they could turn the house on 15 and, and shift everything up a little bit possibly. And it would be nice to have a little bit of common open space with, with a little pocket park kind of thing or something in there, and this is a, a nice area to do it down there. Their old plan, it looked like they were going to lose one lot when they did this. So, those, those were, yeah, a lot of the comments that were there before. And I didn't go through and do a detailed analysis of this one, because I looked at it quickly and saw there's a lot of issues with it. So, it's nowhere near ready to move forward, so I figured they could go back to the drawing board and, and address the big things and, and go back through the notes and make sure they get everything addressed. So, with, with that, I'll make a motion that we hold this till our November hearing.
I'll second that.
I have a motion. Second call question. No, yeah, that was held to November with good reason. Okay, maybe not alone. We're going to eat lunch earlier.
Okay, moving into land use permits. Land use permit number 19, Richard Pickering, Pickering Properties LLC, requests a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults, then permitted by the county code in land lot 94, we're in line at 94, the 20th District. Property is located on the west side of Shiloh Trail, north of Bray Lake Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for lot 19, Rick, uh, Richard Pickering? Does anyone here oppose to this case? Let's direct show there's one person opposed.
I'm not real sure. I talked to him. I'm not real sure why he's not here. I think, no, because we'll be through before he can get up here. John, I can ask him to come up and state his opposition since he's here kind of.
Okay.
Sorry, if you could just come up, be sworn in and state your opposition, and then we'll know where you're coming from. I know what I'm going to do on this.
So, you talk to the client?
Yeah. He didn't like my tone of voice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Todd Burquist. I'm chairman of the Code and Security Committee for Pine Tree Civic Association, and also on the board. And Pine Tree Civic Association most vehemently opposes this variance request. We have been fighting student rentals for many, many years, and we want to keep the integrity of our neighborhood as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, it's back to me. This is my case. Typically, we continue one for 30 days to give them the benefit of the doubt of why they haven't, wasn't here, but we also can act on it without them being here. I did express to him when I talked to him on several different occasions, that our policy had been that we didn't open up the subdivisions for rooming or boarding houses for students, that we had a duty to protect the subdivisions that are up close to the college. There's a continuing problem that we have and will continue to have. What happened was, and give you a brief, what happened was that he bought the house, had his son and daughter living in it, who went to Kennesaw College. The son graduated, and the daughter moved out, so he now wants to put four students in there. He currently, because they wouldn't be related, could have two. He said to make his project work and pay off his house, he needed four. So, and I explained to him that two would, you know, actually help him out a good bit, so. But he was insistent on the four, so I think that I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we deny this application. He can have two students, but I think four would be excessive. And I think the neighborhoods are entitled to as much protection as we can give them from this occurring, because it's an ongoing thing. So, that is my motion. And I will add the clerk's note that he was not here. So, that is my motion. Call question? And that is denied, five to zero.
Okay, land use permit number 21, Young S. Utash, requests a land use permit for the purpose of bridal gown sales alteration business in land lot 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Kimberly Road, north of Old 41 Highway. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to land use permit number 21? Let's direct show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
It's fine. You could speak from right there if you'd like to do that. If you give us your name for the record.
My name is Michael Utash. And my wife is wanting to run a business out of our sunroom. She's going to convert it, and she's one of the hardest workers I know. I'm retired Army Master Sergeant, and I've dealt with a lot of people, and I don't know anyone that can outwork her. She is just, you know, she had a business at Kennesaw Alterations, which is on Giles Road. She had to sell the business because of my leg and my, and stuff like that, so she has to take care of me a little bit. That's why we're, you know, having this little business on the side, and she'll be fine, you know. If anybody can make a business work, my wife can do it.
Why don't you tell us a little bit, how many clients does she have a week, or how many people become, can you hear me?
Yeah.
How many people would be coming to your home? How many clients do you have? That kind of thing. Could you tell us that? We can't hear you. I heard the mic, yeah.
Yeah, I try not to bring a lot of people, just make a home, you know, maybe few people, hopefully. I don't know, but, you know, I try. But I stay home with, kill, kill him, and pretty boring, so I thought, do a little bit inside. So, if, if I can, yeah.
Okay. I think I heard. Fred, did you hear that? Do you know most, can you hear him? him?
Madam Chairman, I don't, I don't have a precise number. Can we get a per day?
For the, you mean numbers, maybe two, three?
Two or three per day?
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
So will you be selling bridal gowns?
Yeah, try to sell bridal dress, and if it's not fit them, then I do the alteration.
And you do alterations also?
Yes.
So selling dresses and alteration?
Alteration, yeah.
Okay.
If I can, yeah.
Do you have anything else you'd like to tell us?
I just, I just want to work, that's all.
All right. Thank you. There was no opposition, so Fred, it's back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think our concern has to do strictly, has to do primarily with two aspects. One was the retail aspect, and, and the second one was the
Alteration?
No, the, the number, just the total number of visitors, how many folks might come. We note that it appears that all your neighbors signed off on this and are, are fine with it. We're, we're trying to work with you on this, and before I make any motion, I'd just throw it up into, any comments from anybody else up here? I'd welcome this.
Andy?
I just have a few questions. I, I also noticed that there are six neighbors that have, that are in support of this, but I'm not familiar with Kimberly Road, so what percentage of the neighbors is that? Is that all the people close to you? Is it?
All around. And that's Cantrell Park behind them, that. Do they think that's Cantrell Park?
Right, so there's no neighbors that way.
There's nobody there. That's just the park.
So do you, do you know that every single one of the, because there aren't any street numbers on our, on our drawon here. So I don't know if this includes every one of the contiguous neighbors, or, and then how long is Kimberly Road? Is it, is it a long road?
It's a, it's a, it goes down about, I don't know.
It's right past there.
Okay, so it's a good percentage of the neighbors that are in support of this? And then are you, is your wife making the dresses, or are they, they're bought retail and just altering them?
Yeah.
And is that, are they actually stocked and sold in your home?
Yes.
It will be, you know.
So you'll have inventory there, and, so in addition to the clients, you might have deliveries and, and stuff on a regular basis for?
UPS.
Okay. So it's basically more or less a one-at-a-time type thing, as far as delivering the merchandise?
Well, I, I would like to do the alteration, just the alteration, but I don't know.
Right, you have to, they have to buy the dress somewhere, and I guess they'd get it altered somewhere else if they bought it from someone else. Not that I know much about this.
Any other question? God?
I'll just throw, have you been doing this already from your home, or?
No, it's, I had a store, alteration store, in Kennesaw, alteration. The name was, but because he was so many operation, 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 then he saw, he had so much, you know, strong medicine, so he can handle himself. So I have to work there at home, and work there at home, and that was too much for me, so I sold that business. So I stay home, take care of him, so he's getting better. You know, he doesn't take the, you know, strong medicine anymore. So I'm thinking, you know, so I stay home, I cannot talk to nobody. So I want to talk to a little bit, you know, people, and work a little bit. So we have a space, you know, the sunroom, it's about 500 square feet, or something like that. So I want to use that for, you know, working. So.
Okay. Now, would you, would you get a business license for this business, then? Is that what, what your plan is, once, if this were to go through?
Yes. I just want to work until, you know, my body gets.
Well, he's probably a handful, right?
Yeah, it's, it is. A handful, it is, but that's why I just do a little bit, not too much, you know. But if you, you say yes, it's, it's fine, but if not, handful here.
Skip.
Yeah, this is more in the, in the area of discussion, not really a question for you. I think normally, we would not want to see this kind of thing happen, but I think there's some extenuating circumstances here, where with a land use permit, it could be for a year, it could be for two years. I would support a motion that it goes for a year, and if it's working fine with the neighbors and so forth, that maybe it'd be renewed as, as long as that continues to be the case, simply because there's some extenuating circumstances here.
I totally agree. We have in the past, given, that's why land use permit was to give them an opportunity sometimes to get started. Sounds like it might be a small operation. We can visit it again in a year and see how the neighbors, if we've had any comments.
And, and, and sir, I would like to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Just, Madam Chairman, just point of order whether staff had any comments they wanted to make before we made a motion.
You know, based on their, their testimony, you know, I think if it could be kept low intensity, you know, with a limited number of deliveries and customers coming to the house, and for a limited period of time, I think, you know, it's, that could be worked out.
12 months, maybe?
12 months.
And limit the UPS deliveries twice a week, maybe?
Well, I'm not too concerned about deliveries, because those happen all the time in a residential area now. Probably want to limit to like, two customers per day. Would that be enough?
Yeah, two customers, okay.
And by appointment only?
Yes, appointment only.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. Yeah. Fred, it's back to you. Don't give your smart ear.
So what they said, Madam Chairman, my motion would be that we, that we move to approve the requested land use permit for a period of 12 months, and we'll reconsider at the end of 12 months. I think maybe try to limit, try to limit deliveries to not more than two per day, so there aren't a lot of trucks coming. Make that a condition, but not try, take the word try out, that we're going to limit this to two deliver, two truck deliveries per day to your home, and we're going to ask you not to meet with more than three people per day at your home. If you need to schedule other appointments outside the home as needed, please do that. That would be respectful of your neighbors' concerns and the staff concerns about adding too much traffic to the neighborhood. Thank, thank you.
And would you consider this with consent agenda?
It's fine.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, second. Call a question? And that's approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hope you do well.
And just come back in two weeks, sir.
Okay. We're what? We're done? Okay, we've got some other business we have to take care of.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes of the planning commission dated September 11th and September 23rd as presented.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second. Call question? The motions are approved. Is that it?
One hour.
One hour, that's a, that's a record, right?
You have two weeks. You'll come back before the BOC.
Okay, thank you. Nine o'clock. But we put you on the consent agenda. You don't have to talk. No, no. Yeah, keep it up.